Okay, you guys ready? Yep. Good evening and welcome to the March 19, 2019 City of Angels Council Meeting. If you can please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep, vocal.
Mayor Fallador?
Here.
Vice Mayor Olivera?
Here.
Councilmember Herman?
Here.
Councilmember Matilde?
Here.
Councilmember Brolio?
Here.
Present, we have four.
Okay. Next on the agenda is public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on matters not on the agenda. State law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed.
Please skip approval of the agenda.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, guys. Next is approval of the agenda. Is there consensus? Is there a motion? So move.
So second.
Is there any public comment? Help. Uh, for approval of the agenda?
Oh, no.
Okay. I'm back, yeah, I'm backtracking, sorry. Um, there's a motion on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Okay, that's a public comment. Um, yes, is there any public comment? Go ahead.
Hello, my name is.
Uh, makes, yeah, sorry.
All right, guys. Next time I'll have this figured out. We're on, okay. So my name's Sarah Weeby, I am the 2019 Angels Camp Farmers Market Manager. I wanted to come to take the time to introduce myself and let everyone know what we have going on for this year. And so I was raised in Dalcito, California. I graduated from Bret Hart in 2008 and furthered my education at Columbia College with a degree in natural resources. Uh, from there, I went with the Bureau of Reclamation and worked as a park ranger for four years and then accepted a position with the US Forest Service on the Calaveras Ranger District for three years until my husband and I welcomed our daughter. I saw the last few years as an opportunity to grow a little extra and sell at the farmers' market. I've always loved gardening and had a passion for plants. So for the last two years, my husband and I have sold produce at the Angels Camp Farmers' Market, so I am familiar with the market and the operations, very passionate about our local farmers' market and our community as a whole. This is the 14th season of the Angels Camp Farmers Market and our community market is a hit. Um, this year it will run from May 24th Memorial Day Weekend through the end of September. That's a total of 19 weeks. We have an average of about 500 people that visit this community market every week. It has really become a common place for people to gather and shop, eat, mingle, listen to live music, um, and it's really a success. People love our farmers' market. There's a lot of work that goes into it behind the scenes, including by our vendors. So, so far this year, we have all 19 dates of the market booked with live music. We will be opening on May 24th with Grover Anderson, a local favorite. We have quite a few wineries booked already, some of which including Rock Vineyards and Arielview Vineyards, which will be featured in our bar. We're looking for about four to five more vineyards that will be featured for wine sales in our bar. We're happy to say that we have about five returning produce vendors. We are currently looking for more. We'd like to get as much local produce at our market as we can. We have a number of returning and new craft and hot food vendors and we also potentially have a local flower vendor that will hopefully be joining us. So chipping up very nicely, we are very excited to see so much community interest and, um, passion for our market. There are also some excellent cooperative efforts going on. Um, the Angels Camp Community Club and the Angels Camp Farmers Market, which you may know is sponsored by the Angels Camp Business Association and the City of Angels actually are doing some great things. The Angels Camp Community Club has volunteered to run our bar during the market for a portion of our proceeds. That is a really large help as it is difficult in past years to find the number of volunteers needed. The Angels Camp Community Club will also be selling pickets for a picket fence fundraiser. This was very successful at the Murphy's Community Park, so we're expecting it to be very successful at the Utica Park as well. Um, I've currently been working with a couple of the city worker employees to vamp up our bulletin boards at the community park and other basic amenities. Um, I would like to thank Roger for his timeliness and excellent communication with me. He has really done a great job at making sure that our requests for the market and cooperative efforts are being, being taken care of. We also have some excellent PR and fundraising opportunities and events coming up. The Angels Camp Farmers Market will be holding a fundraising booth for the market specifically at the Crafty Chicks Road Show on March 30th. That's two weeks away. We also will be, um, holding a booth at Taste of Calaveras at Ironstone Vineyards and that is on April 27th. So this is really going to be an excellent market season. We expect it to be a bountiful summer with all of this rain. Um, it's going to be an excellent, excellent recreational season and we're expecting the market to really, really be a success this year. So if anyone has any questions or suggestions or is interested in any vending opportunities or would like an application, please contact me at angelscampfarmersmarket@gmail.com or visit angelscampbusinessassociation.com for an application. I really thank you for your time and I hope to see you all at the Angels Camp Farmers Market this season.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for taking it over. I know that it's a, a big undertaking.
Is there any other public comment? Nope. Okay. We'll move on to item four. Uh, item four, uh, earlier this evening, we had a closed session and we will be continuing that item until after the regular scheduled agenda. Um, item five, consent agenda. Um, is there any council member that wishes to discuss any item on the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove C and F, please.
What would be the other one?
C and F.
Okay. Are there any other?
Any other?
Is there any public comment? Nope. Okay. Um, is there a motion to approve A, B, D, E, and G?
I'll move to approve, uh, A, B, D, E, and G on consent agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With item C, I am going to abstain from this conversation and then I will be back, um, to join the rest of the council members for item F.
Any questions on item C?
Just give us a brief narrative about that history there.
Yes.
Somebody forgot to do something along the way or what was the deal?
Yes, um, it is the owner applicant's duty to file the deed once it has been approved by the city council and they forgot. So it never was filed. And unfortunately, in order to file it a whole 19 years later, we had to come back to you and get approval again because the state code only allows it to go unrecorded for one year. And that's all that happened.
And so there's no dispute over the lines, the boundaries? All, all the affected parties are in agreement that it's appropriate?
Everybody thought it had already been done until an escrow opened to sell the parcel and they discovered, oops, and that's what happened.
Okay. Um, any other questions?
No, yes.
Okay.
Public? Public comment on that item?
C, that property boundaries? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion to approve C as it is?
I'll make a motion to approve C as is.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 4-0 with one abstention. We'll give the boss back. So C is now approved and we have F to discuss. I probably could add one question about the loan that we're paying on, uh, Pinnacle Public Finance, 164,000. Could you kind of refresh us on what that is? It's on, uh, let's see, I don't see any page numbers here, but it's in your check register, I think on the very first page of the register.
Got it. Uh, yes, so that is a loan with, that we had for, it was originally with the USDA and it was refinanced in 2017, I believe. Um, and that was for sewer plant improvements. I could get more detail on that for you if you'd like.
Is, and so this is an, one installment of many?
Yes.
And what, what's the loan? Do you, anybody know what the loan balance is on that?
Well, we have our audit right here.
That's handy.
Yes.
3.8 million.
Thank you. There you go.
Can you speak at any?
Oh, it's 3.8, you said? Okay, 3.8 million, that's before that payment. As of.
And what did we finance with that when we did it?
Um, I don't have the details on that. I can get it for you. Um, I have a whole binder full of that agreement in my office.
Okay, I just wanted to be refreshed on that. It's a big.
Yes. Yeah, it was a sewer plant improvement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Did you need follow-up on that as well? More?
That's good, I'm satisfied.
Are there any other question? Any public comment? Okay, is there a motion to approve item F?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to our regular agenda. Item A, presentation of fiscal year 2017, 18 annual and single audit. Say.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah, so I'm Larry Bain and I came out and did the, uh, the audit for the fiscal year in June 30, 2018. I believe you all have a copy of the, uh, of the draft of the report. Um, it's not bound and issued yet, but should be, I would expect by the end of this week to be finalized and issued. Uh, so I'm just gonna not go into great detail on this, but just go, go over a couple items and feel free to, to jump in if you have any questions as I'm going over this. Um, but I'll, I'll start on page one, which is the independent auditor's report. And on this page, uh, towards the bottom there is the opinion. And so what you hire me to do is to come out and audit your records and to determine if the financial statements that are presented to me are fairly stated. And so that's where I come out and do the audit and then give you an opinion. And so you'll see in the opinion that there's no qualifications or anything of that nature, so it's a clean opinion. And so I'm telling you that the, uh, the financial statements as presented are fairly stated in all material respects. Okay? Um, let's see, on page two, this is where I give you some other information. Uh, so right underneath the other information, the one new item for this fiscal year was that we added, uh, Gatsby 75, governmental accounting standard board, statement number 75 for the, uh, other post-employment benefits, which would be the liability for your, basically your post-retirement healthcare. And so there's a new pronouncement that we, uh, that we had to implement for this audit. So that, that was one new item in this report. And then also we did, uh, perform a single audit under the uniform guidance. Um, and that, that was for the, uh, the major program that what put you over the, uh, the threshold was the purchase of the fire truck with, uh, with federal money. Okay? So on page three, uh, this is where, uh, this is a long-term perspective. It's called the government-wide financial statements. You, you've got two sets of financial statements in here. This is, uh, the, the one set that gives you a snapshot of your long-term assets and liabilities on the full accrual basis of counting. And so I'll just point out towards the bottom there, under the non-current liabilities, uh, the one new item on here is the OPEB liability and that added between both your governmental activities and your business-type activities, which would be your water sewer funds, added about 3.4 million dollars to your liability for the city. And as a result, um, it's especially apparent in the governmental activities where your unrestricted net position went into a negative, uh, 685,000 dollars at June 30, 2018. And that negative unrestricted net position is mainly driven, uh, by the OPEB liability and the net pension liability. So very, very common for smaller cities, smaller entities that have CalPERS for their retirement and then post-retirement healthcare to have a negative unrestricted net position. Okay? Uh, so, again, I'm not gonna go into great detail on the numbers, but, uh, on page seven, this is your fund financial statements and these are prepared under the modified accrual basis of accounting. Uh, the first set is full accrual, this is modified accrual, which gives you a more, a short-term perspective of your operating results. And so, um, just bottom line, uh, on page seven, the govern, the general fund had a increase of 355,000 dollars, uh, during the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018. So a positive result. Um, you know, I don't see any, any red flags there as far as the city going, uh, into a, you know, going concern position or anything of that nature. Okay? Any questions, uh, on the financial statements there? Those really were the only numbers that I was going to point out unless, uh, the council has any questions on the financials.
Anything you can provide in the way of background on these pension and healthcare liabilities long-term? Anything going on legislatively that might give us some relief that you're aware of?
Yeah, sure. Uh, on the, on the OPEB side, the, the, uh, post-retirement healthcare, right now, the city is pretty much on a pay-as-you-go basis. Uh, there, there is a small amount, uh, set aside, uh, maybe 45 to 40,000 dollars that the city contributes to and, and to make the pay-as-you-go payments. Uh, so that, that would be one area the city might want to look at is, uh, coming up with a funding source to create a, uh, a surplus for the post-retirement healthcare. It's right, right now, there's really nothing being contributed. Uh, on the retirement side, uh, which would be CalPERS, uh, the city does have, uh, a fiduciary net position, which is a cash position to pay the total pension liability. Um, I can point out on, on page 38, that, that would be the, uh, required supplementary information to see how well the city is funded. And you can see on the miscellaneous side, city, city has about 72% of the total pension liability is funded for miscellaneous. And on the safety side, which would be police and, uh, mainly the police, would be 70% funded. Uh, so that, that's a little bit low. Uh, you know, I've, I've been seeing 75 to 80% funded, but, but it's not, I, I wouldn't say it's in a crisis position. So one thing the city can look at to reduce your future cost, um, right now, CalPERS has put you into a 30-year amortization to, to pay off the unfunded liability. You could, you could look at reducing that amortization period to like a 15-year and, and the city would save hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest payments. Uh, right now, you're, you're paying 7% on the liability. So it's a, it's a huge expenditure for the city, uh, to pay off that unfunded liability. Uh, so even if you looked at other financing options, a loan that might be 3% or 3.5%, you would save a significant amount. So that, that, that would be one thing you could look at.
Okay. Any comments on the miscellaneous, which in generally looks to be trending in an improvement mode?
Right.
Going from 79% to 76%?
Yeah, so it is actually going down.
Or it takes it going the other way.
Yeah, yeah, it is trending down, which, uh, you want that number to be going up. Uh, the reason why it's trending down is that CalPERS changed their assumptions. Uh, so they changed that, they, they were expecting to earn 7.5% on investments and they reduced that to 7%. So as a result, um, your net pension liability is going up.
But the trend is different between miscellaneous and safety. Are those two things managed separately?
Uh, no, they're, they're not, but the, they would have separate actuarial, uh, reports prepared depending on the, uh, the members within each one of those plans. So, so you wouldn't expect them to be identical.
Okay.
Cause they're gonna have different criteria, different assumptions.
So the discount rate in those two funds is different and determined by some actuary?
Discount rate would be the same.
It would?
Yeah, the discount rate is the same. What would be different would be like the census data, so the age of the members and the retirement dates. And, and you've got two different plans going on with, uh, with safety. Uh, prior to January of 2013, you had, I believe, a 3% at 50 plan, whereas in miscellaneous, it would have been 2% at 55 or something like that. So you've got, you've got different criteria, uh, going into the actuarial numbers.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and so then the, the only other item I'll mention is on the, uh, single audit. So we came out and because the city had expended more than 750,000 in federal money during the 17, 18 fiscal year, it triggered the single audit. And so Linda Foster, who, she's a single audit expert, she came out and assisted with the single audit. Overall, it was, uh, it was pretty clean. Uh, there were two findings, which I would say are pretty minor. Uh, one, uh, there was no debauchment check on the, I believe, the fire vendor, fire truck vendor. And then also the city didn't advertise, uh, for the bid within the city limits based on the city procurement policy. Uh, but really with those, there were no question costs. We did a debauchment check and the vendor was not on the debauchment list. And, uh, so we really don't think there were any question costs involved. I don't see that it, it's gonna create any problem for the city. Wouldn't anticipate it.
So having broken through that threshold in 17, 18, where do we stand with 19 and 20 with respect to that audit?
Yeah, so for the fiscal year that you're in, in 18, 19, I couldn't tell you where the federal expenditures are right now or if the city will be expending, you know, in the dollar amount, you would need to, uh, create a schedule of expenditures of federal awards for 18, 19. I, I couldn't tell you, I couldn't make that determination.
So we're on our own to determine that with respect to what we've, what we've accepted in federal funds?
Correct.
Overall?
And it's, it's based on, it's driven by the expenditures, so how much you've spent.
What is the dollar amount? What did we hit? Is there an exact dollar amount you have to hit to have this audit?
Yeah, that would be 750,000 within a fiscal year.
750,000.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, so you were barely over the threshold. It's like a little bit over 800,000. Yeah, so with that, um, the, the audit is nearly complete. I'm waiting on a couple of additional items, which I would expect to get tomorrow or the next day. And then we have until March 31st to submit this report to the Federal Audit Clearing House for the single audit and also the State Controller, Controller's Office. So I don't see any issue with meeting that deadline. All right, so that, that's all that I was going to present unless there's any more questions.
And you're, with respect to the management responses to the findings, you don't see any flags in that?
No, I don't.
Looks like for the most part.
I don't, yeah. And the debauchment check, yeah, in the future, the city will check debauchment. And then also on the procurement policy, either changing the policy or following the policy, yeah, pretty, pretty standard response. I wouldn't expect there to be any, any issue with that.
And the delinquent accounts that we, that you discovered, it's our intent to go after that next year if it's appropriate?
Yeah, I believe the city was aware of that and is, is taking action. Mm-hmm. Yep.
So FS 18 dash two.
Yes. Yes. So I, I think my recommendation would be, um, to have further discussions about this.
Yeah, to chime.
Yes. We'll potentially close session.
Yeah.
Do you answer all the questions I, I had?
Okay, good.
Are there any other questions on the council?
No. I was interested to see the CalPERS and all that.
Yeah, yeah, they do have, and I can, I can, uh, forward it to Emily or Melissa, they do have an estimated, uh, payment schedule if you went to a 15-year or 20-year amortization and it'll show you how much, how much the city would save.
That's good.
That the payments would go up in the near term, but in the long term, it's a huge savings.
Like a house.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, is there any public comment about this? No public comment? Okay. Um, do we just, this was just presentation, so no decision action needed?
Just a presentation?
Okay.
Good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Good night.
Moving on to regular agenda, item 6B. Um, this is a consideration of the invite to the Highway 4 Corridor Agency from the Utica Water and Power Authority to explore collaborative options for sewer and water service delivery. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Melissa for background or do you want?
Perfect, I think at this time, staff, just request your direction to participate and accept the invitation from Utica Water and Power Authority to participate in this process, um, as invited by the UWPA Board. So I'm happy to answer any questions if the UWPA members on the board would like to have further discussion, um, but I would like to request your direction to participate.
Um, yes.
Who else have they invited in per se?
It's all listed here in the talk.
That's, okay, so every one of these?
And then courtesy copies were sent to the. And then courtesy copies were sent to me. Want to add anything to that, in general terms?
I would want to, but I sent you a chart. I wasn't sure if you wanted to talk about it.
Well, just for the benefit of the public that's present, the general feeling is that there's a number of agencies along the Highway Four Corridor that benefit from the water coming down the hill. And at the moment, the JPA consists of Angels and Union Public Utility District. We've invited these other folks to participate with us in a study session or a workshop to take a look at the potential for feasibility study, to look at the way that's managed. If we do this on a collaborative basis, there's a potential for grant funding for the feasibility study. So at this point, it's, we're asking the senior managers from the affected districts or the invited districts to join us in a meeting on the twenty-ninth, to come together and kind of tee it up and start knocking it around to see what ideas might come out of that from their perspective. So that's basically the background of it. It's just an invitation to come and talk.
Are there any other council questions? Are there any public questions? Okay, I will bring it back to council. Is there a motion to accept this invitation?
Make a motion to accept the invitation?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
Item number C, approval of the contract change order with STCI Construction for Recycled Water Improvement Project and Budget Adjustment in the Amount of Seventy-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight and two cents. Melissa?
Perfect. So I'm going to do my best to cover these change orders. Kevin's here to assist me if further explanation is needed. But as you know, we awarded the contract to STCI to begin the recycled water improvement project. There were a number of things that we discovered as we began construction of that project. The first being the size of the flow meters and the line of the pipes. Now, upon construction, it was discovered that it was bid and designed an eight-inch pipe, but we were connecting to ten-inch pipe. That was known. I guess it was done as a cost-saving measure by our city engineer. But unfortunately, they did not put the reducers on the bid specs, so that had to be then purchased and acquired in order to connect the pipe. So that was the first change order. The second, due to changes and complications in the field, we allowed the contractor an extension. And then the third was the vault realignment and drain installation. As they started to dig and install the vault, we came across a drain culvert. So these are changes in circumstance that weren't known or anticipated by the contractor or our city engineer at the time that we had done the plans and specifications. So that was unknown, that there was a culvert there until it was unearthed. And then we needed to modify our plans and come up with an alternative. And what they did is they relocated one of the valves outside of the vault so that we didn't have to completely re-engineer the vault or come up with more complicated design features. They just simply relocated those valves. And then the last, but not least, the sixty-three-thousand-dollar recycled water, oh, I'm sorry, the sixty-three-thousand-dollar change was for SCADA. So unfortunately, when the item was initially presented to the council with the contract award, it didn't have the SCADA component. So the city engineer at the time said the SCADA component would come later. Unfortunately, we don't have a complete project until the SCADA component is integrated. And we don't meet the state water board's requirements for fixing this. As you can, as you remember, this was a leak into the creek of the Title XXII water. We were fined and cited by the state water board, and getting this fixed is a requirement, and the SCADA component is necessary. We don't have a compliant fix without it. Also, we needed it at this phase because we needed coordination with the electricians on site during construction. So having it as a component to come later didn't really work with the coordination of the contractor and the electrician that was currently on site doing the work. So that's where we are. I can turn it over to Kevin. He can kind of give you an update on where we are with the project, because I think we are near completion with the exception of the SCADA component. And then if there's any questions that you have for me. But all changes necessary to complete the project and continue work.
Good evening. So construction's done. Vaults are in, meters, flow meters, and control valve, that's all done. We are now waiting on Gold Electric, the electricians, to kind of finish, wrap things up. They've got the conduit installed in the ground. I think they have a pull box to place, and then they just have to run some wire or pull some wire through the conduit and kind of hook it up to the control panels and then to the instruments themselves. Once that's done, you know, we get the SCADA approved, and we give Bruce Whittle, hopefully, the okay to start the SCADA. It's going to be a lengthy process. He actually has to build the control panel for the SCADA out at Greenhorn Creek. You've got parts that's going to take a while itself, too, and then hooking it up and just programming it, tying it into the existing control panels, it's a lengthy process. But if we get that going now with the electrician there as well, hopefully, it'll still kind of be able to all flow smoothly.
So if I read that right, once that's all done, we go back to the state and say, look what we did. We're in compliance, and they're going to waive this hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, hopefully?
Yeah, so this hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar fee is from a previous break, not the most current break, but from a break, I think, I'm not too sure exactly when it was. Might have been 2017 or even before that. No, I think it was 2015. It was a break that occurred up at Holman Dam. And they issued this, and then we had this most recent break that was next to the creek. And so what we are doing is we're kind of addressing both of these problems in this one project. So when we complete this project, we'll be able to go to the state for the hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar fine from the previous spill and fix this current spill.
There was no fine levied for the second event?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm not too sure, you know, this is when Dave Myers was here, so I'm...
I would have to look into that.
Yeah.
Or I think it was dependent upon us fixing, and then they would...
Yeah, I think the hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar fine is to this whole Title XXII recycled water line because we've had so many issues, breaks, spills, leaks with it, that I think it was kind of just for the whole line.
So what about the previous incident at Holman? Has that been addressed? Was that had to do with the spray fields or whatever?
So that, yeah, that leak or break was fixed. But what the state pretty much said was you need to come up with a failsafe system, and that's where the SCADA will kick in.
In meantime, the second event occurred?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
And I know you're saying it's going to take a long time, but any idea about what a long time is?
Well, they're saying ten weeks.
Ten weeks?
Yeah. It's, I mean, parts, just getting the parts along.
Is this all handmade stuff or what?
He's pretty much going to build the panel himself, yes. And he's got to order all these parts, and I'm assuming they'll be shipped probably from out of the country.
Are we up against any kind of a time window with the state?
Exactly. I mean, it's already behind schedule. We can, I mean, I can get ahold of someone for the state, or I can talk to, we had Blackwater reach out to the state with the NOV. I can maybe talk to Blackwater, see if he can reach out to them, too. As far as I'm...
I just don't want to miss a date and end up with a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar.
Yeah, so this, and that's why we didn't want to wait on any of these things and keep the project moving, because when we do reach out to the state water board, we... The state water board, I'm sorry.
No, I think it's the state.
Is it?
Yeah.
When we do reach out to them, we want to let them know that we're on board for the fix, and we want to give them a successful update as to the progress we've made so far. So we've given the NOV, we've gone over this project with Dave Richards, the new city engineer, and he's preparing a response to them, which we will then review by legal counsel before we issue it. But we wanted to make sure that we are in progress with the fix, and that's the update we want to give them.
I know it was overdue when Dave Myers was here, and I'm kind of assuming he reached out to the state and made contact and kept them in loop. I'm not a hundred percent sure of that, but I'm kind of assuming.
How solid are we with respect to Greenhorn Creek contributing to this as it states here? Have you also been writing there or what?
It was writing and verbal, and then we're also working on a reimbursement agreement. But he agreed to the amount of fifty-two thousand. That's for mainly the construction purposes and all that stuff. And then he agreed to fifty percent of the SCADA.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Are there any other, are there any public comment? Nope, okay. Bring it back to council for an approval. Approval of the contract change order with STCI in the amount of seventy-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and two cents. Is there a motion?
A move to approve the contract adjustment?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
Item D, ratification of the city administrator's authorization to purchase a sewer pump in the amount of seventeen thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars for the Greenhorn Creek Lift Station Number One. Roger.
All right, so we are requesting that you ratify my approval of the purchase. Roger is here to talk about the lift station, the requirements of those pumps, and the need for those pumps. But we had one of the three pumps go out. I believe it's the original pump that's been in service since 1996. I had a note that all pumps located in the lift station are more than twenty years old. That is incorrect. Roger has, I think, updated information. They're not all twenty years old. But nonetheless, we considered this an emergency purchase, especially given the amount of lead time, and that we could be looking at spills if a second pump were to go out. So I'll turn it over to Roger, and he can talk more about the need.
It is, excuse me, it is necessary. We started off with two pumps in that system, and it was fine until Greenhorn expanded. And we had to add a third pump to keep up and make the pumps last longer. That pump was one of the originals, nineteen ninety-six. We've put in one in 2008, and we have had, I mean, the third pump was put in 2008, and we had one rebuilt in 2012. So the other two are actually in good shape, but we got a lot of, everyone calls them flushable towels that go down. So we're always pulling them up, so it does wear the pumps, the impellers. So I think it's a necessity. If it overspills, it will go into the pond, which goes right down to the creek, and that's worse than the Title XXII water. So it's, I think it's very necessary. It's a five, six-week wait time for it to get this pump. So we need to get it pretty quick, or get it going pretty quick.
Now, how many lift stations are there out there?
In Greenhorn, there's two.
And the other one is in what kind of condition?
That one's pretty good. It's done a lot less use. I mean, it's very limited compared.
This one takes the bulk of the activity?
This one, yes. This pump, just to give you an idea, the pump I'm talking about has sixteen thousand, almost seventeen thousand hours on it. The secondary lift station has, they have about three thousand each pump. So there's a huge difference. That pump, the Greenhorn Two actually pumps into one from Radgio Court. Pumps into one, and then from there goes to the sewer plant. So, thanks.
So we got to keep this stuff out of the creek?
Yes.
Are there any other council questions? Public comment? Okay, bring it back for a motion to approve the purchase of a new sewer pump for Greenhorn Creek Number One Lift Station and a budget adjustment in the amount of seventeen thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-three and twenty cents plus installation cost.
A move of approval?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
Item E, approval of the 2015 salary schedule for exempt employees as implemented to date with direction to update chief plant operator's salary based on one-off compensation survey as a result of recruitment challenges. And then also further direction for classification and compensation study for fiscal year nineteen-twenty inclusive for exempt employees. Melissa?
Okay, thank you. So a little bit of history on this item. I do recommend the approval of the exempt salary schedule, and I do recommend the modification to the salary range for the chief plant operator or CPO. I believe in 2015, a classification and compensation study was completed. And it's my understanding that it was presented to the council. Is that correct? Is my understanding correct?
Yeah. Yeah, I do.
Okay. In 2017, an exempt or non-exempt?
I wasn't there, but you were.
So we're just having a hard time kind of tracing back the actual item and the amended orders, resolution, or action. So that's a little bit of why we're here. So if I have some of the history wrong, feel free to correct me, because we're trying to trace it back.
Well, I've seen the study, and it is dated 2015, but I don't think it came before the council while I was here.
Okay.
It came through at budget, and that's what we approved going forward when John retired and we did the reorganization structure. That was what that was based on with those decisions.
Okay.
So my record, my memory, I hope, serves me right, is we saw during budget and we approved it to adjust our budget.
Okay.
So that's what it was based on that year.
What we do know for sure, and what we've been able to find, is the non-exempt salary schedule, based on that class and comp study from 2015, was approved by the council in October 2017. And then we began implementing the recommendations of the class and comp study universally in 2017. So that, I think, kind of fits with your expectation of the budget process sort of driving those decisions. And it became direction, and it's how city administration moved forward with the implementation of that class and comp. However, we can't find where the exempt salary schedule was ever officially adopted by the council like the non-exempt schedule was. And so one of the things that we're required to do is have an approved salary schedule that all the employees are being compensated under. And so we've been working with you and some of the MOUs to start getting all of those things in line. So with that, since 2017, for the non-exempt, every hire after 2017 has fit the schedule. But like I said, I can't find where you've ever adopted that schedule. So I am bringing it to you, saying, let's get it on the books and officially adopt that. Since then, though, we have been doing the recruitment of our chief plant operator. So unlike the other positions under this schedule that have become vacant and filled, we've been able to recruit. So we were able to recruit for my position. We were able to recruit for the finance officer position. We are able to recruit for the police officer position. And we had internal candidates that were able to step up to our public works foreman position and our administrative, director of administrative services position. Unfortunately, the chief plant operator position, we've been running that recruitment at that salary schedule, and we have had zero applications. And what we've heard universally is that the salary scale is way too low. In the non-exempt salary schedule, it was dropped to twenty-eight fifty-five. In 2012-13, we had a starting range of thirty-two sixty-one. And prior to that, in 2012, the position had a starting salary of forty eighty-four. So we have dropped it considerably since 2012, and we are not getting anyone to successfully apply for the position. apply for the position. I'm recommending that it go back to the range of the current incumbent. Aaron Randy is compensated at the range of 3261 to 4162. That range still remains under market. Based on our preliminary research, I'm just hopeful that we might get a few applicants to apply at that range. And then my recommendation is that we continue forward with the class and comp in next year's budget and include the non-exempt salary schedule as well. But because of the challenges, I don't believe that I could fill that position at that current range. So what I have before you is the salary matrix. That came from the class and comp with the one modification to the chief plant operator. And then I would like to just further point out that it still remains under market comparatively at the recommended range. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
What is the budget going to look like with this change?
So the budget will be neutral because the current, there will be no fiscal impacts with this because the current incumbent has compensated at this. The only budget impacts will be that I currently have, the incumbent will not officially be exiting employment with the city until April 2nd. However, he's no longer on duty. So I have a need for an interim candidate, which is the next item. So there will be some duplication, some overlap there, but that's necessary. I have to have someone supervising the plant, supervising the employees.
But in that scenario, at any given time, you're gonna have a vacancy of some kind.
We will after that. So I anticipate, just based on the soonest availability of when I can fill this position with that salary savings from the internal candidate, Chris O'Flynn stepping up to the interim, will cover the overlap. That's what I'm anticipating right now. But in terms of what the impacts are to the budget, by modifying the salary schedule to the incumbent's salary range, it'll be no impact to the budget because it's currently what it's compensated at.
And I was wondering also, is there opportunity for, with this change, for in-house applicants? Would that be a possibility?
Yes. And that is another hope of mine is because for one of the applicants at the lower range, it really did not afford him the growth in that position. So he would assume a lot of responsibility. He would make, I think, one step increase for an additional $2 and some change an hour. He's currently compensated at 3442. So you can see, if it remained at 3644, he wouldn't have any room to grow in that position or motivation to stay in it for a prolonged period of time. So my hope would be at the existing range, that it might provide some incentive. And I believe, Linda, we do have two internal candidates with the qualifications and capabilities to apply for the position, and they have been encouraged to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
You said earlier you had zero applicants, or?
Zero.
Zero. Okay, at that price.
And we've talked to former employees of the wastewater treatment plant, and that was their big concern to us, is that it, it's nowhere near their expectations for salary. You look at the years of experience we require, you look at the level of certifications we require. We require dual certifications. So in other markets, you're either an operator for water or an operator for sewer. We expect dual certifications in the CPO for both water and sewer. So all of those are things that challenge our expectation for this, for the position at a lower salary range. And as I may not have mentioned, but based on our preliminary research, we believe the median starting range for this position in today's market is 4315. So even increasing it keeps the position way below market.
So this is just a question because this was brought up a couple of years ago when we were supposed to accept this salary matrix. The reorganization of the city due to financial, that was kind of the trigger of doing this, not to undermine the position and what its expectations are, but as we go forward, we, the council at that time had decided to look internally at reorganization. Is that still something, given our current financial status, going forward that we need to still be looking at in this department like we are looking at in other departments right now?
Yeah, so my recommendation is that we stick with your direction to still continue forward with that. What we've told employees, though, is that we are looking at a classification and compensation study, and that we would look towards an implementation plan. And so revisiting these expectations, I think what's going to be really important in this class and comp is to look at job duties and job descriptions as well and make sure that those are in line. But I think, too, we have to have a realistic implementation strategy that we've got to be able to afford whatever increases are necessary, or we've got to really look at the levels of services that we provide, or we've got to look at alternative organizational structures. But what we can't have is vacant positions because I have, critical positions because we have an inability to recruit because our pay scales are so low. So I think that there still remains the necessity for balance. We still have a lot of finance and financial issues to troubleshoot. We still have a lot of long-term planning to accommodate. So that's why my recommendation is to approve the salary matrix as you had directed moving forward versus just reverting back to an old, non-exempt salary matrix in its entirety. And then my recommendation is we look at the classification and compensation study. We put some effort into that and also an implementation strategy. And I think that the implementation strategy is really gonna have to look at probably positions that are, you know, the most, you know, and I probably would defer, refer to Susan on this, but, you know, we have some that are off-market by 50%. You have some that are off-market by 5%. And so I think what we've really got to do is work with the employees, work with Susan, and that implementation plan has to be grounded in our financial reality. But how do we equitably start to bridge those gaps? And it's a lot more complicated, I think, than most of us would give credit to because movement in one sort of requires movement within.
Sure.
So I don't think it's an easy solution, but I think that this is a temporary solution for me to be able to fill a critical position, and I feel that it's the most equitable at this time.
And I would agree with what Melissa said. I think it's just realistic and something that we have to consider now, and we can look in the future towards making things more equitable.
Just my only concern is just overall with what you've said, it's just the financial situation we're in and not being able to keep up with some of these steps and payment and having to be where we were at a couple of years ago and seriously considering alternative options. And I don't want to put us in that position again. And so when we start going forward with this, I want to make sure that we're not jeopardizing city staff overall. You know, just because we're...
You bring up a really good point because we're riding high, sort of on a hiatus. You have all new employees. I'm at, I'm at a lower step in my salary range than the previous city administrator. Our finance officer is at a lower step than the previous finance officer. New police officers that we hire are at a lower step. So in five years, as we all progress through those salary schedules, then in five years, we find ourselves in a very similar situation that you were all in when you were making these wholesale cuts to positions and salaries and having to figure out how to reorganize. So we have to be really strategic, I think, as finance and HR, working collaboratively because right now, while we might have the funding, we have a sales tax. Right now, while we might have salary savings within a police department because we have new officers at A step, doesn't mean that in five years, those labor costs are not going to start to escalate. And so we've got to be able to account for that and to plan for that. And so I absolutely agree with you, Amanda, which is why I recommend we approve your salary matrix as you guys had planned on implementing in 2017 with the modification to that chief plant operator position because it is, at this point in time, budget neutral.
Okay. Just as long as we're open about that discussion and that going forward so we don't find ourselves back where we were.
Yeah. And I think, you know, we could look at the budget, and we could say, you know, we have sales tax, we have salary savings within departments, but as those labor costs continue to rise, in five years, we cannot find ourselves back in that same position.
Okay. If there's no other council comment or questions, I'm gonna turn it over to public comment. Is there any more? No? Is there any public comment? Yep. Go ahead.
Just wanted to give my story of what, how I perceived it and what happened to me. First of all, you know, I'd like to say, I think I'm working for the same goals as the, as the council for the infrastructure, business, promoting tourism and whatnot. I think we're on the same page. I saw the meeting agenda and felt I needed to address the council on the adoption of this exempt salary schedule. But unlike the chief plant operator position, the city would not have competent, qualified people filling these critical roles at pay rates so far below the median of the surrounding job market unless there was undue pressure, I guess, to do so. In my case, I felt the predicament, but I can only speak for myself, and I hope others will come forward. I spent several years working closely with John Kitchlin, the last, previous public works foreman, to learn his position with the knowledge that I might have a chance to be his replacement when he retired. When he did retire, this position was not filled, and public works unit was supervised by the city engineer. This arrangement caused problems because even though I was named the lead, I had no authority or to schedule or prioritize our work or to do immediate, immediately address discipline issues. With the elimination of the city engineer position, the city needed someone to supervise the public works crew. At that time, I was the public works customer service representative and in a non-exempt position. I asked if I could be promoted to the public works foreman to maintain the structure of the unit, and was told by the city administrator that the public works foreman position was available to me if I wanted it and replace it on the new salary schedule, which would be the range of 29 to 37 roughly. It was an exempt position, so any overtime would not be compensated. I knew right away that the move might cost me, and did cost me, $9,000 a year because I would not be eligible for incentives, overtime, call-out, et cetera. And I was told if I did not take this position, I would be basically back down to a 2-2, distribution collections 2, so they could hire a foreman if I didn't fill it, and that would cost me roughly $13,000 a year. So I took the, basically the less of two evils. I reluctantly accepted the position and smiled while some of you told me I was crazy to take it, but at least my compensation wasn't decreasing. Since moving to this position, I find the duties and responsibilities are much greater than they were when John was the foreman. I've reviewed the salaries of other organizations paid, that paid people who perform these duties, and the median pay for these similar positions start around 39 an hour. This new schedule is substantially below the 2012 exempt schedule for most employees, and increased salaries were in four positions, and everyone else went down. The four positions, I believe, were the city administrator, finance officer, chief of police, and engineer. I believe that in the city, has the ability to substantially increase salaries by one-off, I believe if they, I'm sorry, I'm nervous, but if I believe that the city has the ability to substantially increase salaries by a one-off adjustment or by development of new positions, the council should address the few of us exempt personnel whose salaries range from 11 to 33% below the current market. So I just ask if you don't approve or adopt the salary schedule that was developed after the study was done. I don't believe it was a correct study, just from the course and what I see, and until the completion of a class comp study later this year, I guess. That's all I have.
Thank you. Can I say something?
Sure.
First, I want to apologize if that, that, that's the way you feel. I think, looking back, if any employee was felt pressured at that time during the reorganization, they should have spoken up then. Council was getting feedback that we, positive feedback. So I don't think council would have made some of those decisions had we known the negativity that employees were having. However, fast forward to where we are now, we had to make those decisions, otherwise we were looking at serious layoffs within the city and shutting city hall doors. So while these were not easy decisions, they were needed decisions, and they were the only decisions that we had at that time to keep city staff employed. And so from a council's stand at that time, we needed to move with the best card that we were dealt to keep you guys here. And I am, I hear what you're saying, and I am sorry that that's the way that you feel and that was the position that you felt you were forced to be in. However, we've had, city needs to move on, we need to keep moving on, and I would like to work with staff to see about reevaluating what was done then. However, we can't make promises right now, given the financial situation we are in. If we go forward continuing to do these, do these raises for each and every one right now, we're gonna find ourselves back to where we are, and that is shutting city hall doors. And I, I'm not, I'm not saying that as a threat. I'm saying that I, that is the reality that we are facing if we can't get over this curve. And so we, I understand the sacrifices that everyone has made to make it from the point that we had been to the point we are now, and we are still going through those growing pains. And I'm saying this because I want this to be heard by all city, city, city staff, that this is not something that we've done personal. This was to keep the doors open and keep you guys here. Now, going forward, I am in support of looking into what that looks like related to the City Gate Report and working with city staff to see where we're at, but I can't support something if it's gonna put us back to where we were a couple of years ago, and we're back to, our hands are tied behind our back. And I'm just upset that that was, those kinds of feedback were never brought back, brought back to us. That, I've never, that, this is the first I've really heard that. So if that is something that was going on, it was never relayed to us, at least not to me as an individual, and I don't know, because we have now switched with council members. I don't know if that was said to any other council members, but if it was, it was not relayed to us as, in my record, lecture in that. I know we're not supposed to take action, but I think at this time, city staff needed, need to hear that. And you guys really need to understand what the thought process was back then and how we've hit now. If we hadn't have done any of that, we would be, we wouldn't be sitting here right now. And that's, that's honest truth going from there to now.
Madam Mayor, may I address the council?
Madam Mayor, may I address the council?
Is that legal? Can we do that or is this, at this point become?
If you're here in your personal capacity, yes, you may, in my personal capacity.
First, I'd like to say that it's, it's basically been kind of, I think, what I believed and I, and other staff can tell me if they believe it to be true, that our liaison to the council is the city administrator, that we don't have, we don't come directly to the council with these concerns, but they should come through the city administrator. So let me tell you my story. When Mary Kelly was vacating the position of director of administrative services to become the city administrator in January of 2017, the finance officer developed a job out of the blue, new classification called administrative specialist/deputy city clerk with a pay scale that started 29% below the director of administrative services. The new job description contained all of the functions of the director job, but it also added in all of the payroll functions and some miscellaneous accounting things that had not been part of her job description. As I'd been supporting the work of the director and performing all the payroll functions, I was encouraged to apply for the position. I was less than enthusiastic to do so because it would mean leaving my job as an accounting technician, that was an hourly position, for one which was exempt from overtime and on a pay scale that started below the rate I was making at that time. But I was told that the position of account technician would not remain once the administrative specialist was chosen. So I too felt forced to apply for the position or risk not having a job at all. I eventually agreed to take the position and had to be started at step four of a six-step scale, nowhere to go, couple of steps. In October of 2017, Mary promoted me to the director position and at that time, the finance officer wanted that salary listed on the new salary schedule at a rate she deemed fair for someone who wasn't a true director of administrative services and she noted that on the schedule when she said, "This was built for a position that combined professional human resource qualifications and city clerk responsibilities. If you have a true director of admin services candidate that combines finance and other responsibilities like risk management or facilities, then you should reevaluate at a higher rate." My previous work experience and even the current job duties that they had me doing, which include risk management and facilities, more than qualify me as a true director of admin services. The staff report for the item indicates the city's been able to recruit and hire staff at each position under this salary schedule with the exception of the chief plant operator. It seems to me that the difference has been that the city has successfully recruited for positions when it was able to exploit the current employees who would either experience unemployment or serious pay cuts if they declined to take the job. While the recruitment for the chief plant operator has been managed in a more traditional way, there are currently two employees who are negatively affected by this new salary I was gonna ask you to decline adopting that salary schedule, but I think I'm gonna change my mind and say, I would like you to address the inequities that Roger and I face on that salary schedule, just like the chief plant operator was addressed on that salary schedule. Put, put the rate on that salary schedule at the rate that was on the 2012 salary schedule, which would still put at least my position at least 22% under the median of the market. That if you could do that and make it effective July 1st, 2019, that would leave the current budget unaffected and only tho, those two salaries would be impacting the budget for fiscal year 1920. And then we could address the, the inequities further with the class and comp study that's tentatively planned in early fiscal 1920. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, we'll go back to council.
With respect to this, this is just an extract from the 2015 study, which was conducted over a period of the prior year. So there's data in here from 2014 probably. So let's call this five years old. Is there any way to adjust this legally or otherwise? Uh, not legally, to bring it current with respect to cost of living and all of that and if so, how, how does that change the landscape?
So I think my recommendation is because, you know, we are in negotiations with, with all of labor right now. So if this is something that you would like to consider with your exempt, or I'm sorry, non-exempt employees, then you could provide me with that direction. I think it, I'm sorry.
No, I would, I think we should bring, I think we should go forward with the recommendation of the chief and bring back at a separate time and update this council, the history and even staff because there has been so much staff change. This isn't something that is the current city administrator's doing or these are actions that have happened over time and I think we need to go back, talk about where we were, what has happened between that time, where we're at now and how we're going to go forward. That way, newer council members can be educated on what is going on before we make any decision.
And I think in fairness of all employees, because I think when we look at all positions citywide, the number of positions under market are probably substantial. So I think from my perspective, what's important is that we get this right moving forward and that we are dealing with personnel issues to address internal inequities. I think what's fair to say is that within the salary matrix, all of the positions are under market, but I think that we need a class and comp study. I think we need to put the time in to completing that fairly. This one-off for the chief plant operator is out of emergency and necessity. I have to have somebody in that position, otherwise I wouldn't be considering any changes to the salary schedule if we have the incumbent able to stay within that position for two to three year, more years. So I think my recommendation is what we've committed, what I've told all staff is hold tight. We need to continue with the City Gate, we need to continue with the long-term, five-year financial planning, and then we need to continue with the classification and compensation study.
I, I have a question in regards to the two people that are internal that are what I, maybe I'm hearing it wrong, they're qualified to apply for the chief plant operator position? So they're currently working for us and they have the skills, there's no way that we can put them as interim, just to?
That's what I'm recommending in the next item. But their motivation and the current salary schedule is, one of them is currently at 34, their current salary schedule maxes out at 36. So they, they have not submitted applications yet and so I, I need to then also create a recruitment opportunity where we get the best and most qualified individuals applying for these jobs. So my hope is that we get some internal and external applications and candidates to consider.
I have a question. Now with Susan and Roger, what they have brought up, are we saying that this is something that has happened not just to the two, but to many employees? Or is this a unique situation with the two of them?
I think this has to be to us.
And is, okay, and you're asking to have that corrected? Okay, but is that something we have to discuss and put onto a future agenda looking towards July? Is that what you're thinking or I just wanted to see where we're going with this?
You wanna go ahead? Okay. Just in case.
I think that it would be equitable if you're looking at moving the chief plant operator on the salary schedule to a, a position that's more in line with that older salary schedule from 2012, that these two positions, mine and Roger's, be moved the same on that salary schedule. I can understand recruiting now at that level for the chief plant operator, but I think Roger and I need some, some hope. I mean, that come July 1st, we too will be considered. And I understand that it's not budgeted for the current fiscal year, so if we begin that in July 1st, it can be, we can work on getting that into the budget and it's two of us. It isn't, it isn't everybody.
Well, I, I think at that point, I would.
At that point, we gotta go and do everyone because that's not gonna be fair. We're gonna be sitting here right now with another group saying the same thing. So if we're gonna do this, then we need to invest, invest in doing an overall one for the entire city.
I understand that, but I can assure you that even at the rate that you've, where you've, on the schedule that you've moved the chief plant operator to a rate consistent with the 2012 salary schedule, which is higher than is on this 2015 salary schedule, that doing so for two more positions who have been underpaid from the day they took the job, for Roger since, what, last year, for myself, it's been three years that I've been underpaid and I keep getting, we're gonna do something, we're gonna do something, we're gonna do something and it hasn't happened. If you expect to retain qualified individuals as well as recruit qualified individuals, you need to address the inequities that are going on here. I would encourage you to, if you want to adopt that schedule, to only adopt it once those two salaries have been brought in line. And I don't mean in line with the market median because I understand that we don't have that kind of money. But I, I am saying, you know, at least bring it up to the 2012 level, that's seven years ago.
You're, just for clarification, you guys are, have a contract with the city as an exempt employee?
We also have an MOU.
Okay.
Which is a whole nother issue, but yes, we have a contract.
And the MOUs are used for the salary negotiations as opposed to the individual contracts?
We did, we've never gotten to negotiate our contracts, not Roger and I.
You don't have a contract?
Yeah, we both have contracts. We were not given the opportunity to negotiate salary.
You just signed the contract?
We were told, this is it, this is the place, or in my case, you don't have a job.
Sign or not sign at that point?
Yeah.
That was your choice?
Yeah.
Okay. But you did have a choice.
I had a choice.
And the contract contained a wage?
And the contract did contain a wage and I believe in Roger's case, he said he expected to be demoted.
I see, unless he took the.
If he didn't take the position.
Which lost $9,000.
Right, and overturns.
So, I think my recommendation stands and I think that universally across the board, citywide, we have more work to do because I hear the same issue over in PD, I hear the same concerns expressed in FIRE, I hear the same concerns as expressed in the miscellaneous bargaining units, that their compensation is far below what the market allows and what's deserved and that for years, employees have been making concessions and making sacrifices. And so I think from my perspective, I'm grateful for Susan, I'm grateful for Roger. They're examples of employees that have worked for the city and made sacrifices to continue to move the city forward. They're not alone. There are a number of employees that I talk to every day that have these same concerns. They may not have the same parameters that they've expressed today, but I think from my perspective, in terms of treating all staff equitably and financial long-term planning for the city, I need the time to get it right.
What is the timing on us looking at equitable for all employees? What are we looking at timing-wise?
I would recommend the classification and compensation study to start July 1.
How long does that start to take?
If you'd like me to identify a cost estimate and start it sooner, then we could start looking into maybe beginning it before the end of the fiscal year. But I would say probably conservatively, six months. We would need to issue an RFP and I would allow at least a month, maybe two months for responses. So I think conservatively, six to eight-month process.
And it wouldn't, so it wouldn't happen in July 1st?
It wouldn't happen July 1st. If you want to direct us to begin the process, we can start that, but my goal was to budget it as a work element in the next year's budget.
How, how long could an interim chief plant operator be in there?
So I don't think there, there's any concerns about the, the length of time, I don't think the state would have any concerns with the appointment on the interim. I don't think we have any issues with purse, with the interim appointment. It's, it's just based on his willingness to continue to take on the responsibility and his willingness to, to want to fulfill that position. So my goal is to try to run it at this salary range. If we're not successful, either come back to you with a discussion about our strategy moving forward or if we just continue to keep Chris in the position while we do the classification and compensation study. Primarily for me, it's wanting to get this salary schedule approved because it's what we're doing now and we need to have employees operating within an approved salary schedule and then also create some motivation whereby hopefully my internal candidates put in their applications and maybe I become attractive to anyone outside looking for that CPO position.
So this, this schedule is from 2012, so it's?
So I believe in.
Seven years old.
That, that particular one was developed, shall we go ahead? That one was developed in, in 2015 from salaries that were as old as 2014 and it was, it was begun to be implemented in 2017. So here's with the 2015 compensation study and this I've heard universally from all city staff. And in fact, we are changing the way we do the next compensation study so that city staff can be participatory, but there is extreme distrust on all levels. So what Roger and Susan are expressing to you today, I hear from staff at all levels of our city government that they distrusted the data, they distrusted the results of that 2015 comp study, they felt that it was manipulated on an administrative level to yield a budgetary outcome. And so, you know, what, what can we all do about that now?
Yes.
You know, recognize it, I think, put together a team of staff that participate in the class and comp study moving forward next year, but I still need the data, I still need the information and I still need an equitable citywide approach to this problem because being in this position, one of the things that I've noticed is that, you know, I hate that we're doing this, but this is what's happened. You know, I've got employees that are paid out of scale because they received an increase or a promotion and it just doesn't seem that those types of things have been equitably applied to everyone within a unit, let alone citywide. I think when we look at some of the miscellaneous employees compared to safety employees and you look at the hourly wages, I don't think that there's been equity within units, within bargaining units. So, you know, I think what, what Susan and Roger are saying is there's a fear of a perpetuated inequity and is this going to be an example of that? And I think that the only thing that I could say as a city administrator is, one, I appreciate their work, I appreciate. their work, I appreciate all of the city employees that have been sacrificing through this transition, but I need to get data and information, and I need to implement it citywide. And I wouldn't be in this position right now if I wasn't in what I consider to be a critical position with our chief plant operator and the ability to recruit.
Well, you know, I think that chief plant operator is unique in that it requires state certification. That's different than experience and background with respect to qualifications for a job. This is a certificate that shows a specific training that state recognized for him to be in that job. So with that in mind, you know, I'm kinda in favor of moving this for that position to get that over. You're telling us, Melissa, that this schedule has been in place since 2017 for new hires. People that were incumbent stayed on their old schedule, like Aaron and you're, you're on this, Roger's on this, because you came into the jobs after 2017. You know, if that's the official position we're in, I don't know that we can individually adjust anything, but we could direct Melissa to accelerate the study with staff participation so that it's up and running, this is March 19th. You know, it's up and running in July, maybe we, you know, in June maybe, but we don't incur any billing on it until next fiscal year. And just try to accelerate it and, you know, get it as equitable as we can, as fast as we can. But, uh, that's kinda my take on it.
I agree, the acceleration is essential, because I feel torn at this moment and not wanting to enter, undercut what needs to be done for, you know, our, our, um, on recruiting and getting, you know, what we need for this position. But I feel it's the same time with Susan and Roger, you know, I'm sort of in conflict and struggling about that, so something would have to be accelerated.
Can we also direct staff to, while doing this, the, continue looking at the reorganization?
Yes.
Because I think that's the key thing of where, where we were and where we're at. We, we decided we were not gonna have those positions because of cost. And so the question now becomes is what does city, city staff organization chart look like? And, and those were things that were talked about over these last couple of years to get to where we're at. And there, where, where are we going at City Hall to be sustainable, to keep people employed? If we're gonna, what was, what was going on before was not working and was breaking the bank, then we need to really also reevaluate, what does our org chart look, and how is the structure of City Hall and an employee standpoint gonna be in the future? And I, I think that's part of the result of the grand jury report. We came out of this because of that. So I, I think these two need to go parallel with each other, of what are we seeing, what is the reality, and how are we gonna get to these points? And it's not gonna be something that we all have been part of it, it's not something that's gonna happen overnight. I mean, we're in a huge transition right now. So is that something that we can...
Absolutely. So I think that goes in parallel with the City Gate. So your organizational directive that, that you began implementing over the last few years is what exists. You know, those positions that were consolidated and eliminated, that's what we're operating in. We have contracted out for positions that have become vacant as part of this transition. I think the other part of this transition is the multi-year financial planning. So that was a City Gate recommendation, so that we can see the escalation in labor costs over a five-year period of time and know where we have the room and what we have to really negotiate with. That's something that we've gotta make a priority going into next year. This year, I think we're hoping to bring you a budget by the Ju-, July 1st deadline. Next year, we need to look at more multi-year financial planning. And then I think the other component of City Gate was further consolidation, which was bringing together community development, bringing together City Hall. That consolidation means streamlining positions. There could be further transitions with more consolidation. The other thing in terms of the organizational structure that City Gate recommended was strategic planning for public safety. You know, we've gotta look at police and what levels of service and staffing levels were acceptable with the community, and we've gotta look at our relationship in terms of consolidation of FIRE. All of those things are part of this discussion, which is why I think for all of the people that work in those units and, and in those positions, we have to kind of stay the course in terms of the strategic planning part of this and not just address isolated issues. Because I, I think the message from employees is universal, and it's very similar to what we've heard today. The uniqueness, no, is that Roger, or that Susan specifically, was coming from a position that had been officially eliminated.
Question on the, so if we don't, if we don't make this raise, or make this different classification, and we don't fly this job, Chris O'Flynn will still, let's say for six, eight months, Chris O'Flynn will still move up as the interim, and there's no, nothing wrong with that statewide with him operating that plant. And we could come up with a big game plan and redo the whole thing at one time, rather than this one little fix to get somebody in there now. And you're saying you have, you hope you have two guys that will apply for this job if we bump the salary now?
I, I hope that they would apply, they've expressed interest, but they haven't applied for the month that it's been running.
Right.
And when we've notified them that we will increase this pay scale. And so my hope is that they apply. And really, my goal is a competitive recruitment. In recruitments, you wanna bring the most talented and capable. So I think that's why we've gotta do something immediately with this position, I think even if we want internal candidates to consider it for a long period of time.
I, I just need to say that I did receive a letter of recommendation for an internal candidate, so I'm expecting an application. I haven't received one, but I have received a letter of recommendation.
Good.
Any other questions, comments?
I just wanna say that I remember when we were discussing the consolidation of positions and what was going on with the, the budget for the city, and it was not pretty. And I remember the council making decisions that were, what I felt, very hard, and I think all of us at that time. And part of those discussions repeatedly, there was, "Well, we can have people working, and yeah, they're, they'd have to sacrifice, or we have people not working." And nobody wants to go down and pay, you know, nothing else goes down in expense, but the council at that time was, wanted to keep people working, did not want layoffs. Position, and yes, positions were eliminated. It was just, it was an extremely stressful time in regards to budget and what information we had. And we weren't, we were doing it with great care, I think, and great concern, because this is a small town and basically everybody knows everybody. You know, so I just, and it may not make it easier or better, or, or I just want you to know, you know, we were trying our hardest to keep our city staff, our city staff, yeah, and not having people unemployed.
I was wondering, I think Alvin brought up something, I didn't know what you were thinking about keeping the, um, some, you know, the interim person on instead of, what were you thinking about that?
I was just saying, we don't have, I was wondering if, if we don't approve this, if Chris O'Flynn is still gonna step into the interim position, is there any problem with waiting that six, eight months until we get that class and comp study and do this at one time across the board? Rather than do this and Chris O'Flynn in there, there's two guys internally that are gonna apply for it, and hopefully others that apply for it. There's just...
Hopefully they...
Multiple steps in there, rather than not approve this. Chris O'Flynn is already gonna do the interim.
So my recommendation then would be to suspend the recruitment, because the, a successful recruitment is a competitive recruitment, where we get capable, qualified people internally, externally applying, and we have an option to find the most qualified individual to fulfill that position. So I think my recommendation then would be if you would like to approve the salary matrix, not make the modification to the chief plant operator, but then suspend the recruitment until the class and comp is complete, and then Chris would not be taking the position at a rate of, I think, 3688, which would have been the staff. He would probably be at 3644. It's still above his current rate of pay, which is 3442.
Where are you getting those numbers? They're not consistent with this table.
Uh, they are, they are on the, um, next item, the next item in the staff report.
Can we go, we can go ahead into that next item?
Yeah, but I'm trying, I'm asking, answering his question.
Right.
What would happen is that Chris would, he would be at the top of the pay scale, he would be at F.
Right.
So I would recommend then suspending the recruitment until then the class and comp is complete.
And we're gonna accelerate that.
I think that there's some vulnerability there, because...
That's my question.
Yeah.
State legal...
They're shorthanded.
Oh, they're short.
So Chris's position with Aaron gone will be vacant, and so then we prolong getting that other person in the field and trained and ready to go. So they will operate short-staffed during the recruitment process. That's the downfall. So my, my goal in proposing it was to try to increase my odds of a successful recruitment, to keep them operational, and to keep them staffed.
And if nothing else coming out of this, it's brought to light that we need to accelerate the class and comps and figure something out.
You know, and I think that, that just kind of alludes to sacrifices that we put on staff when they're short-staffed, you know, because we're trying to problem-solve these issues.
Well, it's only for so long that that can happen, and then it will rise up at some point, and we're just at that point in which the inequ, in, in the inequity now is kinda catching up, and so I'm, I'm not surprised, this is, it's time.
I think so.
It's just time.
I think it really is.
It is.
And I, universally, I hear this from city staff, and I mean, they have made sacrifices. And Amanda, you allude to, we, we know, we've been in a dire situation, and this has been our attempt to keep people employed rather than laying off or terminating. But I think in this specific case, you know, I would like to keep water, wastewater staffed. I would like to try to continue with this recruitment. I don't know that this recruitment will be successful with this range, in which case I'll come back to the council and let you know how many applications we have, if we want to continue, or if we wanna delay, talk with water, wastewater staff about their staffing levels. I think that we could cross those bridges as they come, but my goal was to keep them staffed and to do the best that I can to get a competitive recruitment.
I think given the sensitive nature of the water, wastewater arrangement, keeping it staffed should be a priority, and creating a vacancy through a interim appointment and a vacancy that just goes unfilled in the background puts people at, at risk, puts, it's potentially be a public safety issue. So I, I think personally, Melissa's thought this through pretty well, I'm happy that it set the stage for Roger and Susan to come forward and make these things known, you know, in a public setting so that it motivates us to accelerate this whole process. But I for one, you know, favor making a motion to approve...
Are you making that motion?
Yeah.
So approving E as stated?
Or be as stated?
As stated.
With the caveat that it includes a direction to staff to accelerate the rate study.
Do you second it?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five oh.
Thank you.
Moving on to item F, ratification of the city administrator's appointment of Chris to the position of interim chief plant operator for wastewater and water department effective March 13th. Melissa?
Okay, so I recommend the appointment of Chris O'Flynn to the position of interim chief plant operator. He has a considerable amount of experience with water and wastewater, working for the city for the past 14 years. He has the necessary certifications to fulfill the responsibility of the position, and I would recommend he be placed at a rate of 3688, which is an increase of $2.46 per hour from his current rate of pay, which is 3442. And he would then be placed appropriately, hopefully, in the step D of the revised salary matrix that you just approved. So that is the recommendation on an interim basis.
Any further council comment, question, in what was discussed before? No. Public comment?
Okay.
Bring it back to council for a motion.
I'll move to approve staff's recommendation for the ratified appointment of Chris O'Flynn to the position of interim plant operator.
Second.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, too.
She did. No, I was pointing to.
Okay.
I was pointing around again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is recognition of Andrew for four years of service, Greg Baker for 12 years of service.
Thank you. We'd just like to take a moment to recognize city employees and their years of service with the City of Angels camp, and so I made this just a goal for a year, that we go through a rotation, and Susan has been working and developing some tools to create an employee incentive program. So one of the things that she's going to start by doing is reaching out to the employees to see what they would appreciate and value, but I'd just like to take this moment on the second meeting of each month to recognize the anniversaries that our employees have.
Are either of them here? No.
They're both firefighters, part-time.
Oh, really?
No.
Okay.
Okay, on to agenda item seven, consolidated staff report. In front of you, you have a consolidated staff report. Are there any council questions or comments on this staff report?
For fire, Nate, I see you in the back of the room there, on, on site inspections, you know, commercial site inspections?
Yes.
How are we doing on that?
For fire, life safety inspections?
Yeah.
Uh, progressing through it, it's, um, it's been a little slower because of development activity has picked up quite a bit with, you know, track supply, some, the Mark Twain medical, as well as TIs and different things. But we are on track to get all of our state-required inspections completed this year.
So that's a, that's a fiscal year, July to June?
It's a calendar year.
A calendar year.
Yeah.
So December 31st. So December 31st, you'll have it all done. And is there a stair-step completion rate that you have to get done? You have to be 50% done and half the year passes or...
100% is what needs to be inspected annually.
So there's no interim scheduling?
No.
So what's your sense of where you are now? Your understanding that you're going to get done? Are you halfway through?
Pretty close to halfway.
Oh, yeah? Okay.
The big ones are the assemblies, like the hotels and stuff like that, which have been completed. The schools are the next big ones. And those can be a challenge, but those are next on the list.
Is that like a one-day event where you just dedicate the resources to it for one day?
The high school for sure. The elementary school isn't quite as in-depth, doesn't have quite the size and the cover and systems.
Okay. Since you mentioned hotel.
Yes.
We were going to get a tour of Utica. Where are we with that?
Yes. So I believe a request has been made to the property owner for the tour. And I think we are working around vacation schedules to coordinate that. That's the last I know. Is there any new information, Amy?
Only that she may go on vacation and then come back and then do the hotel tours. She sent me an apology today saying she may not be able to get all that to happen before...
Who's that to?
Mary Ann, the owner.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to ask one thing, Nathan, about the grant. I know there's a grant extension. How difficult is it for the fire department to get grants? And where do they, where do you get them from?
The one that's referenced in there was actually applied for by the city engineer. It was, and actually it was the engineer tech prior to Kevin, I believe, was the one who applied for it. And I think that one was relatively easy because of the significant rainfall we had and some, you know, minor incidents that we experienced that year. Although they didn't create too much damage, it really allowed us to apply for some of the funding, which we were successful in getting the grant. We just didn't, we didn't engage in the grant process until, what, six months ago, really? So we're on track now getting a grant, a one-year extension. We have until June of 2020? June of 2021, 2020? June of 2020 to complete it. There's four aspects in the grant. One of them is to update the city's emergency action plan, which we began working with the county OES on creating actually a document that is similar to the county's, almost will mimic the county's emergency action plan, which is good. Because we want both plans to have the same language and to say the same thing. And then we'll actually develop a flood plan, response plan as part of that as well. We've already completed almost 90% of our NIMS and SIMS training employee-wide. It's been good receptive-wise from the employees. They've actually stepped up and done a really good job at going and getting the training. We probably only have one or two that we need to catch up on, but we're real close on that. And then once the emergency action plan and the flood plan have been approved and they're brought to you to be ratified, we'll have a tabletop exercise with all stakeholders and other groups and then do an after-action review. And then finalize funding and send that to the state for approval.
That's great. I just think it's always good if we can get grants, you know, that's good. I think it keeps us up to date.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's great. Thank you.
Are there any other council comments or questions? Okay, with that, are there any public comments? Okay. And moving on. And next is council report, and I will speak to my last with council member, Metoli.
Went to the DAC meeting.
Can you speak louder?
Oh, sorry. Oh. I went to the DAC meeting and... Just talk of the, what's coming up in regards to some businesses that are coming in. And also recognition for Ann Forrest, who is leaving the area and her contributions to the city and DAC and ACBA, et cetera. And I can't wait for farmers market to start.
Okay, my turn?
You're done?
Okay. Oh, one thing is, been involved in some of the merchants making a plan for the sidewalk sale, and that will be on April 20th, the day before Easter. And there's going to be an Easter hat contest in which children can get $25 and adults $50 if they decorate their hats. And there's some real creative ones out there. And so on Visit Angels Camp, you're going to see some examples of that. So that's been really enjoyable, working on that. And then the scavenger hunt that CVB has been working on is up. And the scavenger hunt, I went with a group from CVB and we ran all over town very quickly with this historical scavenger hunt, and it's great. I would go a little slower myself next time, but it was still fun. And it was very informative, things that you know you don't notice. You know, then it makes you see the plaque, you go, the car, it has three monuments in the park going, oh, my gosh, I didn't know that. And so it was very enlightening. In some ways, it could also be used as a historical tour. But the scavenger hunt part is very good and it's very good for families and different groups vying against each other. So it's called Let's Roam, and you can find that online. So it's Let's Roam scavenger hunt. So we'll find it for Angels Camp.
Amanda.
Oh.
This changed.
Okay. We're going to have to hold on a second.
Pause.
Yeah. Good. Okay, back in action. Council member Oliver.
Okay. LAFCO attended their meeting last night. Proposed budget for 1920 was reviewed. City contribution is increasing or will be increasing if adopted due to rising expenses and a return on reserve policy to create the balance up, back to $100,000, up from 75. The estimate increase for the City of Angels will probably be in the range of 3,000 to 4,000. I sent Melissa a separate note on that because I didn't know what the original, what the normal channels were, so that's just FYI at this point. Direction was given to move forward with the dissolution of several county service areas. The discussion was around CSAs that were developed for, or created for developments that probably just didn't materialize, whether they were subdivisions or some other special application that would require that. There was about four or five of them in there that we gave staff the okay to pursue, dissolving those, the steps necessary to put in place dissolving those districts. There are no budgetary activity, no board of directors, no record of, you know, any activity for quite a number of years. We reviewed Murphy's Sanitary District Municipal Service Review and Sphere of Influence. It was approved with congratulations on a turnaround in the district's financial health. Next on the radar for municipal service reviews and SOIs are Valley Springs Public Utility, Calvers Public Utility, San Andreas Sanitary and Union Public Utility District. That's not in any particular order, it's just that they're on the radar for LAFCO to review those things. I think I mentioned last time that Angels is on the radar too because it's been a number of years, but they weren't specific, we weren't specifically mentioned in that. The next meeting for LAFCO is May 20th. Then on CPPA, I've got nothing to report. The next meeting is April 17th. And Central Sierra Economic, nothing to report. Next meeting is May 16th. And then UWPA, we continue to search for GM. And as we noted tonight, we've sent that resolution out inviting interested parties to participate in a workshop regarding water and wastewater issues along the Highway 4 corridor. And we meet, that meeting is set for the 29th, as we said earlier. And that group, UWPA Board, meets again on the 26th of March. And then lastly, the solid waste management district that's never met since I've been around continues to not meet. And there's an application process that you go through online that I did and has no reply. So...
Doesn't exist.
I'm doing what you told me to do since it's not working. Okay, that's all I have.
I attended LAFCO, but Joe nailed all of it on the head, pretty much. We have to pay more. What was there? Insurance premiums were going up. There's a few things going up, but Joe nailed the whole thing.
I have nothing to report other than IRWMA meetings. I'm still coordinating with Kevin. When I connect him, he gets a break. Okay. With that, we will move on to calendars. Susan?
Okay. Speaking of IRWMA, that's tomorrow, 9:00 to 12:00, at the TUD offices. Then on Thursday, the 21st, at 8:30, there's the DAC Executive Committee meeting and also a museum commission meeting. And at 3:30 that afternoon, a grand opening for Salon Soleil in downtown Angels. And then on the 23rd, that's Saturday, at 1:00 PM, there's a grand opening for Calaveras CrossFit up in the north end of town. March 26th, 5:30 PM is UWPA. And we meet back here Tuesday, April 2nd, for council at 6:00 PM.
Okay. And with that, the motion to adjourn.
So who? So, say?
All in favor?
Aye.
And then once the room is cleared, council will go back into closed session.
Do you need me here?
Huh?
Do you need me here?
Yes.